Good evening, I called order this October 17th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Vesey.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you, would you join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, would you join the City Council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, our Sergeant in Arms tonight is Lieutenant Ed Branchall, thank you for being with us tonight, we have the first resolution.
Resolution honoring the Winston-Salem Chapter of the Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated. Whereas, Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated is an organization dedicated to enhancing and advancing the standards, ideals, and general welfare of the community through service by encouraging and promoting ideals that will be conducive to the betterment and ultimate welfare of all people. This national organization is composed of 3,000-plus ladies from the United States and Jamaica. The membership is comprised of many distinguished women involved in noteworthy and varied activities in their respective communities that have similar ideals and aspirations as those fostered by the founding ladies. And whereas, the first meeting which established policies and enacted governing laws of the organization was held June 4th, 1964, in Tyler, Texas. Founding members included Chapter Organizer Lady Thelma Small, First Chapter President Lady Dr. Callie Coaxum, and Top Teen Advisor Lady Dorothy Graham Wheeler. Thirty-six ladies were initially inducted to commit changing and improving their communities. The Winston-Salem Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated was chartered on October 17th, 1982 via the inspiration of Lady Ozel Dean, then a U.S. Air Force Nurse Corps Major while a guest at a luncheon given by Lady Bird Johnson shortly after she and President Lyndon Johnson moved into the White House. And whereas, the organization's primary mission is to enhance and enrich the lives of youth and adults through national and community-based programs and projects where success is measured by the improved quality of life experienced by the people served. The five service thrusts are Community Beautification, Community Partnership, Senior Citizens, Status of Women, and Top Teens of America. TLOD is a valued and storied history of dedicated community service to organizations such as American Cancer Society, Cancer Walk, battered women and dress for success clothing donation, March of Dimes, Through Walk for Healthy Babies, NAACP for Community Partnership, North Carolina Black Theater Festival for volunteers, Ronald McDonald House Pillow Donation, Linton of Hope Multicultural Centennial Day Volunteer, Sickle Cell Thanksgiving Baskets, Red Heart Go Red Community Partnership, and many more. One initiative started by the Top Ladies of Distinction was the St. Jude Walk in Winston-Salem, which is held annually to raise money for St. Jude's Children's Hospital. Most recently, the organization along with the City of Winston-Salem Credit Union contributed three truckloads of donated items to assist the residents of the Rolling Hills Housing Community. Special events held include the annual Red and White Land Cruel Scholarship Banquet and Dinner, Salute to Ladies Awards Banquet, Salute to Ladies Awards Luncheon, Simply Pink Garden Party, and Simply Red Heart Luncheon. And whereas, Top Ladies of Distinction recognizes a member with a Community Service Award which is presented for outstanding achievement across a broad spectrum of the service arena. And Top Ladies Scholarship is awarded to graduating top teens of America, which provides opportunities for youth that will enhance educational, social, moral, spiritual, cultural, and economic development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize and honor the Top Ladies of Distinction for the many years of dedicated, selfless, and steadfast community service and for being beacons of light in the lives of so many people in their respective communities.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or none, that is unanimous, and Mayor Pro Tem Vivian Burke is going to present this, I believe Ms. Bobby Miller and a number of the ladies are here tonight, so.
Yes, would you like to join me?
Sure.
The mayor and I are indeed happy and pleased in the council people. We always like to let people know how much we appreciate your dedication and your commitment. I cannot begin to tell you how happy and proud I am when I see the youth. They're going on to college, they're getting into the world and doing many, many positive things, so we're really elated tonight. And I want to thank Ms. McKay for putting this together, thank you. You want to say something?
Just again, on behalf of all our citizens, you make Winston-Salem a special place for all the projects that you do, I've participated with you in a number of them, like the Healthy Babies Walk, and thank you for helping make Winston-Salem an even better place.
On behalf of the Winston-Salem Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, we're just humbled to receive this most prestigious award, and we just want to thank you for recognizing that we're out there in the community doing what we need to do for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're going to take a picture.
When you have an opportunity to let the citizens know how much we appreciate them, we take this opportunity and it's very spiritual to that. I know the city manager must be also happy because citizens like these ladies and their choices make a big difference for this city. Did you get shy and didn't want to get on the picture?
That's okay. I ruined a picture with that good-looking group of folks. Thank you all very much for not only being here tonight, but what you do for our community. We have the next resolution.
Resolution honoring this Successful Outcome After Release Program. Whereas, the SOAR program was inspired by residents' suggestions from a Stop the Violence Rally in February 2014 and months later initiated with the support of the City of Winston-Salem as a program that focuses on helping ex-offenders find gainful employment, become productive members of the society, and reduce recidivism. And whereas, a critical element of success with the SOAR program has been working with nonprofit and community organizations that provide education and vocational training. And whereas, the City of Winston-Salem has partnered with these organizations to provide participants with personal and professional development sessions including goal-setting, social media etiquette, healthcare for the uninsured, driver's license restoration, entrepreneurship, and business planning, networking, fair housing, and financial management. And whereas, 23 former offenders have been hired under the SOAR program and have been assigned to labor and administrative support positions in the Vegetation Management, Properties and Facilities Maintenance Custodial Division, Recreation and Parks, Fairgrounds, and Community and Business Development Code Enforcement Division. And whereas, Ms. Bintakiba Banner, Mr. Jeremy Cody, Mr. Justin Hairston, Ms. Barbara Reeves, Mr. Jarvius Williams, and Ms. Kianta Wilson are SOAR participants who have taken pride in contributing to their community, work 32 hours each week, are paid at the city's living wage, and have displayed the type of hard work and dedication it takes to have successful outcomes after release. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize and commend partners of the SOAR program and the six citizens who are currently participating.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, there are none, that is unanimous. I'd recognize the Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Taylor, who's going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I can say that on all the programs and things that I'm involved with in the community, this is one of the ones that I'm most proud of. With the help of the council, I founded the SOAR program, provide those second chance opportunities for members of our community. We know that we have the brightest and best citizens in this community, but everybody knows that no matter what you do for a living, no matter what you thought of, nobody can do anything without first being given the opportunity. This program provides that opportunity that's necessary for us to be successful, and just very briefly, Mayor, members of the council, if I may, will provide just a small insight into one of those stories.
We cover about five to six streets today, keeping Winston-Salem looking good.
Bintakiba Banner works for the City of Winston-Salem's Vegetation Management.
I try to come in with a good attitude, energetic attitude, and just do my job to the best of my ability.
This is a new attitude for the 39-year-old. Two decades earlier, she was on the fast track to the North Carolina Correctional Institute for Women in Raleigh.
In 1998, I caught a charge, death by motor vehicle charge. I chose to let someone else drive my mother's car.
Banner's girlfriend died in the car accident. This launched her down a path of using powder cocaine, breaking into cars, stealing property, and committing credit card fraud to support her habit. Banner served five years in prison from 2002 to 2007. Three years later, in 2010, she was behind bars again as a repeat offender. Then, her mother died in April 2014, 18 months before Banner's release.
I knew right then and there that I had to change, and I changed, and I kept my word with her because we would talk every day. You have to block out a lot of stuff that's going on out here to continue to live and survive in there. Nobody wants to go through that because when I tell you, it's torment, it's torment. So I made up in my mind, yeah, I get released, I'm not hanging with the wrong crowd, I'm not doing anything, I'm going to stay on my grind as soon as I get home, and that's what I've been doing. You know, some people will have negative outcomes, but I chose to make a positive outcome.
Banner's reentry counselor connected her with the City of Winston-Salem SOAR program, Successful Outcomes After Release. Out of 120 applicants, she's one of eight ex-felons selected in the latest group.
And I know that with the SOAR management team, I know that I can always depend on them, and, you know, it's just not, only for the program, it's, they help you in different situations that you're going through, anything personal, they help you, and it makes me feel good to know that that management team is, you know, having my back like that.
For six months, participants are assigned to departments compatible with their skills. They work 32 hours a week and are paid weekly.
I have saved up money in the bank, I feel good about that, I have, you know, got my own credit card, I'm not using nobody else's credit card, now I'm using my own with my face on it.
The big goal, to give ex-felons working experience that'll help them get a full-time job.
I am a working person now. My employment can become permanent with the City of Winston-Salem, that's what I'm working on.
Banner also wants to be a plebodumist, as well as a positive role model for her nephew and five nieces.
You know, I keep it 100 with them and let them know exactly how I feel about doing right from wrong, look at the situation that I was in, an officer telling you when to get up, an officer telling you when you can wash, an officer telling you when you can use the phone, you don't want to go through that.
She now describes herself as self-confident and believes her life has purpose. More benefits, Banner says, to being in Winston-Salem's SOAR program.
It's all forward from here, it's no turning back. You know, I am set, my two feet are locked in on the ground, and I'm set in one direction, and that's forward. And you throw it, and that's it.
Once again, Mayor, members of the council, I can say that as a native son of the city, I believe that I'm an example of what happens when the community and the village pulls together. The participants of this SOAR program, in all of their glory, are an example of what happens as a village when this community pulls together. So Mr. Rollick, and would you come up and accept this? Participants, would you please stand? Not only are they participants, but some of them are my friends, my personal friends. On behalf of the Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate all of what you do to help our city to be a better place than they're working in actually. Mr. Rollick?
Well, I guess I'll just certainly say, reiterate, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, it's been a distinct honor and pleasure to be charged with administering this program. I think I have learned as much from the participants as maybe they have learned from
to add to the story that we saw on the monitors and to what Councilmember Taylor has stated,
us, and it's just been a true honor and pleasure. I just, again, thank you all for your participation in what you've done for the city, and wish
I do not believe that there is any greater example than when you see people who take
you the best in the next phase. Thank you.
Counselor Montgomery?
advantage of an opportunity to make their lives better. And I think that for anyone who has ever had any question about the SOAR program and the investment that is made, this is not just simply, we make plenty of investments across the city in building buildings, but this program itself specifically helps people to relay bricks of their lives. And for me, it is, again, I would second what Councilmember Taylor stated in terms of the true impact that this has on individuals. And some people will never understand what you go through, they will never understand your story, but that doesn't mean that you don't have one, and that doesn't mean that you can't overcome it, as I said to you all earlier, and as I shared with Councilmember Adams and Taylor, even for me in listening and hearing your stories, to hold back tears because they're, to see how people continue to fight through things. And I'll share this, and I'll be quiet, it is the words of my favorite poem, which says, "It couldn't be done," and it's something that I live by daily, and it simply says, "Somebody said it couldn't be done, but he with a chuckle replied that maybe it couldn't, but he would be one that wouldn't say so till he tried. So he took off his coat and took off his hat and went to it. He started to sing as he tackled the thing that could not be done, and he did it. There's thousands to tell you it cannot be done, there's thousands to prophesy failure, but take off your coat and take off your hat and go to it. Start to sing as you tackle the thing that cannot be done, and you'll do it." And so to you all, I say again, congratulations, because you're doing it, and keep pressing forward.
You're here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, congratulations to the participants. Tonight's agenda, the City Council's comprised of two parts, the General Agenda and the Consent Agenda. And Councilmembers, I might have pointed out, you see, we do have an amended agenda which moves Item C6 to the General Agenda as Item G2. Of course, it's always the practice of this council to take the Consent Agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There will be no discussion of the items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the Consent Agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, members of the public can always get copies of our agenda as well as videos of previous meetings online at the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just select the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items that you want to have pulled? I know Councilmember Montgomery wants to see 14.
14.
Item C11.
11, 7/17, okay. Is there a motion on the ballot?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, on the ballot for the Consent Agenda, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that is unanimous, okay. Item C11.
Item C11, Consideration of Items Relating to a Contract for Construction of Bowman Gray Methane Remediation Project Located in the East Ward. This item was recommended by the Finance Committee.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes, just want to, again, I wanted to pull this item specifically for public understanding of what this is. And if you all may recall that several months back, that it was discovered within the Bowman Gray Stadium property that there was some methane gas located there, and as a part of that process, staff and other teams were, undertook the process of looking at how to remediate that gas, and this item moves forward those conversations. And so, as we promised the community that we would continue to move forward with this and that we would not be taking this lightly, but would actually come back with actual action items, this item actually does just that, to help in that process of remediation on the property. And so I wanted to pull that out to make sure that the community understood, the action was moving forward, and that we want to make sure that the neighbors in and surrounding Bowman Gray Stadium understand that actions are moving forward to help remediate the issue that was found there.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move for approval of the item.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, Councilmember Clark.
Mr. Turner, I know while we were going through this, we discovered that there was a sewer line that went across the property that had some leaks with it. We were going to replace it by putting in a new pipe in a different location.
That's correct, it's going to be addressed as part of this project, Councilmember.
Okay, so with that and this remediation, will this remediation be indefinitely or until, because there's only a fixed amount of methane down there, I would think.
Until a sufficient amount of the methane has been removed in order to get it to a safe condition.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. Item C14.
Item C14, Consideration of Items Related to the Relocation of Traffic Signal Cabinets, item recommended by the Finance and Public Works Committees.
Councilmember McIntosh, excuse me.
Just a question, staff, does this have any impact on the timing of our closed-circuit TV cameras downtown? I know that there was some interplay, shall we call it, between Duke Power and us and NCDOT, this doesn't impact that at all?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that is unanimous, thank you. And then item, is it 17?
Item C17, Ordnance Renaming an Unbuilt Segment of Gammon Street to Mulberry Street, located in the South Ward. This item was recommended by the Public Works Committee.
I believe, actually, you wanted the item on Maple Street to Earlene Parman Drive, which would be now 16.
It's 16.
Item C16.
Oh, the amended agenda.
Amended agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Ordnance Renaming a Disconnected Segment of Maple Street to Earlene Parman Drive, located in the Northeast Ward, recommended by the Public Works Committee.
See, Councilmember Burke and Taylor wanted it to.
Northeast Ward.
All right, thank you, go ahead. Councilmember Burke.
Yes, Ms. Parman's daughter's here, and would she come up one moment, please? Ms., come up, right here, please. We need to get it passed first.
Why don't we, if you're ready.
Yes, I move for approval. Come up.
Motion second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you for being with us.
We just want you to know that when this appeared on the agenda, all of us felt positive. There was not one moment of anyone saying no. It passed in the committee, and I'm sure we will be doing something later on, have a proper type of reception, so that we can say to the family, since I represent you directly, I represented your mother in the Northeast Ward. Also, I was telling you when we were coming up on the elevator that your mother used to probably play in that particular area, and when we had the Plant 64, Representative Parman, Senator, was on the program to talk about growing up as a girl with her grandfather, Mr. White. So it's something that's viewed as positive, and you'll be hearing more about it when we do it more in an official way, to say thank you to the family for the sacrifice you made and your mother being so involved in the community and the state. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, would you like to say?
Yes, on behalf of my mother, Senator Parman, and my family, we would like to say thank the City of Winston-Salem, and just thank everyone here. Thank Mr. Taylor for the call today, because I would not have known, but we are very honored, and she's been honored throughout this city. But I really feel like this is one of the biggest ones that I've, I can, I feel in my heart. So I really thank you, and if anything the Parman family can do for you, just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here tonight. We miss her every day.
We do, too.
Thank you. And the council will now go back to the General Agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There's continuation of an item amending the Unified Development Ordinance. There's an item regarding issuance of a multifamily housing revenue bond, an item related to agreements with the Housing Authority, an item related to the submission of youth homelessness demonstration application agreements, and an item related to the City Council's November meeting schedule as well as our public comment period. The UDO ordinance and the issuance of the multifamily housing revenue bond items are listed for public hearings. When each public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the City Council will consider the item. We have item number one, please.
Item G1, Continuation of Public Hearing on Ordnance Amending Chapter B of the Unified Development Ordinance to Require the Amortization of Nonconforming Adult Establishments in the CB Zoning District, UDO 272, Proposal of the City Attorney's Office. This item was recommended by the Planning Board and was continued from City Council's October 3rd, 2016 meeting.
The public hearing is still open, is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed UDO text amendment? All right, seeing no one, unless they have, someone has a question, Mr. Norby, I will declare the public hearing closed, and would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, Councilmember Clark.
Just to reiterate to the folks out there, and I'll look to our city attorney to be sure I'm telling this correctly, with these changes, we will, after, is it a three-year amortization period we have?
The amortization period expires on December 31st, 2019, so basically, at that point in time, the nonconforming adult establishment downtown would have to cease that particular use.
Okay, that's in 2019, okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
All right. Councilmember McIntosh.
I do want to point out that this is not a taking of property at the end of the amortization period, the property will still belong to the gentleman who owns it now, so we are not doing an eminent domain process. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery?
I know I will probably be alone tonight, but I won't be supporting this UDO text amendment on the grounds that I feel that it is specifically targeted towards specific business in an area that I believe, potentially, that not in a disagreeance of the challenges that it faced in terms of being in a place where you have residential and now this type of business and the issues that it raises, but for me, the question becomes what happens when it's another type of business that others don't like in a particular area, will we come forward and change our UDO to disallow that use in a particular area because those who come into the community don't like what comes there? And so for that reason, I will not be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I will be supporting this. The thing is, like we said, in a lot of cities across the state and the country, but particularly here in North Carolina, they're changing. A lot of cities are trying to bring back their downtown areas that have for so long gone in desolate conditions. It's not so much as just the citizens that live downtown, and it's not so much as thinking about whether the people like it or not. Again, the City of Winston-Salem is a brand, and this is part of who we are, and with all of the money that we're investing, and I'm talking taxpayer dollars in the bond, into the convention center and into the downtown area to continue to infuse tourism and dollars to create jobs and tax base.
I know I will probably be alone tonight, but I won't be supporting this UDO text amendment on the grounds that I feel that it is specifically targeted towards specific business in an area that I believe, potentially, that not in a disagreeance of the challenges that it faced in terms of being in a place where you have residential and now this type of business and the issues that it raises. But for me, the question becomes what happens when it's another type of business that others don't like in a particular area, where we come forward and change our UDO to disallow that use in a particular area because those who come into the community don't like what comes there. And so, for that reason, I will not be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I will be supporting this. The thing is, like we said, in a lot of cities across the state and the country, but particularly here in North Carolina, they're changing. A lot of cities are trying to bring back their downtown areas that have for so long gone in desolate conditions. It's not so much as just the citizens that live downtown, and it's not so much as thinking about whether the people like it or not. Again, the City of Winston-Salem is a brand, and this is part of who we are. And with all of the money that we're investing, and I'm talking taxpayer dollars in the bond into the convention center and into the downtown area to continue to infuse tourism and dollars to create jobs and tax base, you know, there's some things that have to change. I mean, I know it's been down there for a very, very long time as a business that what we're trying to find some type of, I call it a resolution to correct. So I will be supporting this, and I hope the other members of the council will do so also.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Motion passed at 7 to 1. Councilmember Montgomery voting no. Thank you. Item G2.
Item G2. Public Hearing on the Issuance of Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds, Rolling Hills Apartments, Series 2016, Recommended by the Finance Committee.
Council, I entertain a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to open a public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We're in a public hearing. Might ask our CFO, Ms. Saunders, just to state very briefly, this action is being asked to the City of Winston-Salem, just to clarify that the city's not actually issuing the bonds and will not have any liability for them.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council.
Good evening.
Tonight is the final legal process to issue the multifamily mortgage revenue bonds that you preliminary approved on September the 19th. The first action has to be a public hearing by law. The second action is the consideration of two resolutions, one that actually approves the financing team and makes certain facts about the bonds, and the second is actually the resolution to actually sell the bonds and give the city manager, myself, and the city attorney, the authority to execute the documents. This is not a debt of the City of Winston-Salem by general statute. It has to be issued through the City of Winston-Salem, but it is not a debt. It is backed by the project revenues of the project, Rolling Hills.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. Any questions? Councilmember Clark?
Ms. Saunders, my memory may be poor, but I don't ever remember us doing something like this in the recent past.
We have not done it in many years. Some projects you might remember are Ladera Crest, that was done in the 90s.
Okay.
I think a project called Northeast Ventures, I'm just thinking, Summit Square. There have been three or four projects over the last probably 30 years that have been done in this manner.
Those were prior to my time, I believe.
Right, and all of those actually have been paid off at this point in time, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone like to be heard on this proposed issuance of these bonds? All right, seeing no one, I'd entertain a moment, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. The public hearing's closed. We have item A.
G2A. Resolution Approving the Finance Team and Making Certain Findings With Respect to the Issuance of Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds, Rolling Hills Apartments, Series 2016.
Councilmember Finance Committee, Councilmember Clark?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item B?
Item G2B. Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds, Rolling Hills Apartments, Series 2016.
Councilmember Clark?
I'll make a motion for the sale of the bonds.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, Councilmember Montgomery?
Just like to make a comment in totality in reference to this action and the Rolling Hills Apartments as a whole. As community understands and knows, this has been particularly over the last several months, something that has gotten much attention, but individual residents who have lived in Rolling Hills for an extended period of time have experienced poor living conditions over an extended period of time. And what we have here tonight, and our representatives of new ownership who are here tonight and others, that what this action does is allow them to be able to make substantial renovations and impact to the property that will have a high impact on the quality of life of residents in Rolling Hills beyond the investments of moving from roughly about $12,000 to $15,000 of investment originally per unit, this moved up to about, above $40,000 a unit in terms of investment. And that was because of the city's engagement in the process and talking with the new owners and the desired level of investment that needed to be done. And as a part of that, seemingly that our action tonight will be contingent upon them making that type of commitment to make the investment in the property, and they have come forward to do that. And that is, again, why personally, as the council member for the area, I am enthusiastically supportive of the action, because I think that it's going to improve the living conditions for the residents there, where we still have work to do to make sure that we continue to invest in the lives of the individuals that work there, that live there, excuse me.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, individuals have asked a question, and they have every right, as taxpayers, to ask this question. How, in spending this, this investment that's being made, how will we monitor to make sure it does not become what it has been? Because the City of Winston-Salem has made big investments with tax dollars, and because of what we have on the book from the state and even here, that we can do what we call minimum kinds of inspection. So the question again, and I don't know, Mayor, who's going to answer that question, how can we know that it's going to be the accountability that needs to be as far as this project is concerned?
I'm just asking Mr. Brooks to comment on the, I guess his department would certainly be monitoring the work that's there and then continuing, keeping an eye on it.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. During the construction, staff will monitor the existing work that's proposed to be done to ensure that it is completed satisfactorily. Councilmember Burke, you are correct. Once the work is completed, our responsibility then will drop down to only monitoring it for compliance with the city's minimum housing code. So if there are, unless the work is done satisfactorily from the outset, I think you will continue to see what has occurred over the years, but just as your experience is with Ladera Crest, if you have a good management company and the management company is staying on top of making the needed maintenance work and responding to work complaints, the presumption is that the work will hold up. So that is our desire, so we can ensure that it's completed satisfactorily from the outset, but beyond that point, it would just be monitoring it for minimum housing code.
Thank you. The same time we did Ladera Crest, we did, which is no longer Burke Village, it's known as New Hope Manor. And I want the citizens to know that they put my name there. I don't have any kind of investment in that, and it is a shame that it looks like it looks. It is a disgrace that it looks like it looks, because it ought to be serious business about how people are living in that particular area. And we use the same criteria, somebody did, as we are talking about with this new investment in Rolling Hills, to make sure that it does not become like New Hope Manor. And I don't think that we have really, Mayor and members of the council, given any type of strong, we appreciate what Mr. Brooks said, but that is not, that is not really saying to the citizens with your investment that you're making down the road that you're going to have a nice, decent place to live. City manager, can you address this?
Mayor Pro Tem, based on the amount of money that the new proposed owners are going to put into each unit, they will be refurbished to a much higher level than the minimum code. We do have the authority during that construction to inspect, part of the agreement. We'll make sure that each unit is brought up to that much higher level than minimum code, so we will ensure that, and then we will use all of our authority we have to continue to inspect them within what the state allows us after they're completed. But when they're, when they're renovated, they will be to a much higher standard than minimum code.
We understand that, because it was Burke Village. It was much better. It had the same type of look that Ladera Crest has had. And Ladera Crest is what it is today, because the management decided it was better to make sure people would appreciate where they are living, rather than to see how quick they can fill them up. And I think that is something, Councilmember Montgomery, you know, right now, you're beginning with this particular project. But if we are not careful, maybe after about four or five years, because when this first got started as New Bethel, it looked nice. You remember how it looked? And then it went from that to many, many owners, and now we're in the situation where we're in today in trying to make it decent, affordable living for people who cannot do any different.
Councilmember Montgomery, head up.
I did, I had two questions, and hopefully it can be answered, and it touches on some of the questions that were brought up by Ms. Burke. I know there's a representative here from, from the new company tonight, and I don't know if we may be able to just ask a question in reference to them, in specific to the timeline in terms of the ownership. I know in terms of representative who was here before spoke specifically on the fact that this was a long-term hold in terms of property and long-term commitment that the, that the new owners would have in this, that this wasn't something that they were looking to flip, but it was something that was a long-term hold. Could you speak to that?
That's correct.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Alan Izzo. I'm at 6875 East Evans Avenue, Denver, Colorado. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council.
Good evening.
And to answer your comment, no, Steel Properties is not a short-term buy-and-flip-type investment company. And we find that when we, we use active management in combination with this high level of standard that was mentioned earlier to make sure that the property holds up, not for just one or two years, not for five years, but 15, 20, 30 years, that sort of thing. Not only is it an issue of quality of life for the tenants, which you take very seriously, but it's also about, from an investment perspective, we want to keep these properties up to make sure that they are, they are in good shape and they perform the way we need them to. So this is certainly not a short-term buy-and-flip, and we view this as a partnership between us and the city going forward.
Okay. And my second question was to Mr. Brooks, and you may be able to touch this, but I know within, this is, the financing in terms of other HUD guidelines, and I'm not sure if it applies to this project, but particularly when it comes to construction work that's using federal, federal dollars in reference to housing, that there is some provision that allows for residents within properties to have opportunities within construction jobs. Does that apply to this project at all? Does that provision apply within this? Or if you-
There is a provision called Section 3.
Right.
Where whenever feasible, opportunities have to be made available for individuals that are classified as a Section 3 resident, and this would be one that Section 3 would apply, but there are different ways of addressing that. So that would be something that management would be responsible for overseeing.
I just, there was a question from community I wanted to raise and make sure that that was a, a part of the conversation, that if there were opportunities that fell under Section 3, that the residents were given that opportunity to, to do work that they qualified for.
Councilmember McIntyre?
I just wanted to comment about my, when I was up doing a site visit and I met with a, with a new ownership group, something that encouraged me is their attitude about reserves for repairs. And I've seen a lot of projects go under because people did not have enough set aside to repair things when they, when they were needed, and I think that's a common point of failure. And just in conversations, I was, I was happy with, with y'all's attitude and the ratios that you're going to use for reserves, so I feel good with this.
Yeah, we have two reserve, we have a replacement reserve and an operating reserve just for these unforeseen circumstances. North Carolina Housing Finance Agency requires us to deposit a fairly high amount, if you're certainly happy to do. The underwriting is good, the deal makes sense, and we're ready to rock and roll.
Councilmember Burke had a question.
Yes, it sounds good, what you just stated, and what I would like to hear from you would be, you say you're looking farther than three, four, or five years. Of the question that the council person asked about this Section 3 employment, we had another housing project, and that was supposed to happen, but when you rode through there, you saw very few of the residents working. So if that can be a commitment or not. And then, the question I would ask you also, would you be more interested in keeping your units filled, rather than making sure you screen the applicants to make sure your investment remains? Because it's not, that's some hard money, and I'm sure the money you all are coming up with is not easy, and it's like your money going down the drain.
We, I think a lot of investment companies make the mistake of what you just said, trying to fill the units, rather than getting the right folks in there and maintaining the right kind of environment, and know the management company that we're with is not associated with the old management company. And we are committed to not only kind of fixing up and spending the money at the property, but also creating the environment that's going to last for a long time to come, so.
I don't know if I'll be around 15 years from now, I really don't want to be around 15 years from now, but I do want Mr. Montgomery to pull this same video here and see if it's the truth. Are we gonna, they gonna hold you to it? And I'm gonna speak from the grave to you.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 3.
Item G3. Consideration of Items Authorizing Modifications to Agreement for Rental Assistance with the Housing Authority of the City of Winston-Salem. Finance Committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor, none opposed, and one excused.
Councilmember, I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on this item.
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Councilmember Montgomery, you're excused for voting on this item. I recognize Councilmember Clark for a motion.
I'll move approval of G3.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous with Councilmember Montgomery being excused. Now, item 4?
Item G4. Resolution Authorizing Submission of Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program Application and Execution of Agreements. Finance Committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor, none opposed, and one excused. It was reviewed by the Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee.
Again, I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on this item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Councilmember Montgomery, excused.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark may have a motion on it.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. The motion passes, with Councilmember Montgomery being excused. Now, item 5?
Item G5. Consideration of Council's November Meeting Schedule.
As you know, of course, the League of Cities will be going on in Pittsburgh during that period of time, so the recommendation is to adjust the committee schedule and then keeping the meetings on November 7th and 21st with the city council. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item 6?
Item G6. Public Comment Period.
Item G6, public comment period.
This is the time once per month where the city council and I entertain a discussion from citizens on items that are germane to city government. We had asked interesting citizens, interested citizens, to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. So, does anyone like to be heard tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, city council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. Staff members. My name is Yvonne Smith. I reside at 3510 Sally Kirk Road here in Winston-Salem. I come before you tonight to address the issue of minority and women-owned business inclusion. Having worked in this arena for the past 20 years, and most recently as the City of Winston-Salem's MWBE Director, I am encouraged that as a resident and local business owner of an MWBE firm, we have been able to have open dialogue about this topic. It is imperative that I say thank you to Councilmember Montgomery, as well as James Taylor, for all of your heavy lifting. We can count 25 MWBEs that have been awarded work as a result of your efforts, and we appreciate that. As an MWBE, we understand that policy is set by city council, and staff has to implement that policy. The more than 200 minority and women-owned businesses located here locally, and over 500 firms located in the region, need your oversight on the projects that still remain to be done on the bonds. Most importantly, you have the recent Union Station Phase 2, Old Davis Garage Project coming up for consideration tonight. The goals were 12 M and 6 W, that's 12 minority and 6 women. I am told the contractor came in at 6 M and 9 W. They also submitted an affidavit of good faith effort, and that was reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee, and then forwarded to the city council for consideration. It is my opinion and many MWBEs that this particular project could reach the goals. On vertical construction, that's where we have the most representation in the MWBE community of contractors. We know that the City of Winston-Salem only has a subcontractor program. We ask that you consider these projects, all of them, from the design level all the way down to the subcontracting level. And one way that you can gain immediate inclusion is to begin looking at these projects as a CMR-at-risk project. This project could qualify for that, and that could in turn help the contractor who's being named tonight. We ask that you take these recommendations seriously, and we also ask that you revisit the March or April report that I did when I was here, recommending various aspects of changes to the MWBE program to ensure inclusion. Two things you can do today, make sure you have a joint venture and/or CMR-at-risk policy to ensure inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnson. Is there anyone else?
Joe Allen, PL Box 284, Winston-Salem, 27102. Tonight, I actually want to speak on behalf of the residents of Roland Hills. And what I would like to say, and what's been relayed to me over the past three months is this, is that first, we must take a step back and take a look at the fact that we would not be here where we are right now in the spot, as far as giving anybody any money, whether it comes from the city or from someone else, or some other agency. And that's evidenced in the fact that we do have New Hope, formerly Burke Village. We do have Roland Hills. What I would like to say, and what the residents have relayed to me over a period of three months, is this, is that how in the world can the city, and I have to deal with Mr. Brooks as far as over the Housing Authority, how is it that you want the residents of Winston-Salem and the residents of Roland Hills to trust the city, when the city actually had control? There's no way that you could not have known over a period of 10 years what has been going on in this city. It's so hard when you are, you know, when you react to something instead of being proactive upfront, and I haven't seen the city do that. We are always reactive, even with the Bailey Park, with the coal ash, everything that we do is reactive, and the residents are actually tired of it. It's easy to say, yes, we're going to have Mr. Brooks take care of this, this. Well, guess what? Mr. Brooks was aware of all the ills with Roland Hills when the Housing Authority was in charge of it, no less than, you know, the New Hope Manor. All these things have played a part in Winston-Salem. And what I would like to say, it's just a few more months left, please, please, stop being so personal and taking things so personal, when the people out here look up to people putting their best interest for the citizens of Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Christopher Garrick, 1232 Dublin Drive, formerly 720 Federal Court Department, number 5, was a residence of Roland Hills apartment. As Ms. Allen stated, the city was aware of these problems that was going on 10, maybe 10 years ago, before the Housing Authority apartment sold the property in 2014. The city being over Housing Authority, and Housing Authority being a bridge of the city, which shows that Mr. Brooks was aware of the situation and the problem that was going on. Why re-renovate on property that's already festive? They already have festivity in it, instead of tearing it down and rebuilding it? All it's going to do is cause more chaos, because the people are tired. They're tired of living down there in the condition that they're living in. When the apartments was built, they said that the pest control had to come out because of the roach festivities that was coming, and so far, their problem is still going on. Roaches are crawling around outside as if they are part of the community, which the people are tired of living like that, coming out their apartments, seeing roaches crawling around, they got their kids running out there. The sewage lines backed up, the sewage lines are backed up with leaves and stick, no one has cleaned the gutters out, so when it rains, the water runs from one part of the parking lot down to the other one, causing a big flood. That problem hasn't been taken care of. People are still complaining about their children breaking out of the mold and all this stuff that's going on. Nothing is being done about it, other than they're coming in doing minor repairs, trying to fix up the outside of the community to make it look like something, instead of dealing with the inside, where people are dealing with health issues. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down tonight. Mr. Garrity, would you just clarify that Housing Authority is not a division of the city?
Thank you, Mayor Jones, members of the city council. The Housing Authority is an independent governmental authority. The only authority, the only ability the city council has to regulate the Housing Authority is the mayor appoints the members, but they are completely independent. All of their actions are governed by the Housing Authority Board, all of the properties they own, all the liabilities, none of those are the city's, so they are independent from us, and our only authority is appointment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? And I'll close the public comment period. Councilmember Burke had a comment?
Yes, and I need to say something about this, two things. When you mention the Housing Authority, it does give the appearance to the residents, to the citizens, that the Housing Authority is under the City of Winston-Salem, because when they make calls, they do say Winston-Salem, and people can misunderstand this. And I think the individuals who brought this to our attention, it's legitimate what they're saying, because we're right here, and we just finished trying to, we talked a few minutes ago, how did Burke Village, New Hope Manor, get in the condition it's in? How did Roland Hills, which is once New Bethel, get in the condition it is in? It is because the hands of the city is tied. There's only a certain, how far they can go. They have that minimum, and then the housing, people from the Housing Authority did the inspection of those units, and we had nothing to do with the inspections. So I would say to citizens, you need to be going to Washington, and you need to be talking to those people up there, and also Raleigh, because they have the big lobbyists. They're the ones that's controlling it. We don't have that much authority, I just want you to know, and I feel the same way about some of these things. Mayor, members of the council, there are several people here who had some concerns about the Y, but somebody explained when we did have the item about the Y. Yes, the one, Winston Lake.
Mr. Garrity, would you mind just give a quick update on the status of that effort there?
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, we were approached by the YMCA. They have some concerns about the operating loss that they've run at the Winston Lake branch of the YMCA. We have been talking to them about a potential proposal. We brought it to committee just for discussion last month, but the potential of the Y donating the entire property, the property's valued at about $4 million, several acres of land adjacent to Winston Lake Park that the city owns. But we've been talking to the Y about they would donate the entire facility to the city for one, actually sell it for $1. We would lease back a small, about 25% of the facility for them to still operate and express Y, YMCA, and then the city would operate the rest as a senior center. There are some costs associated with that that the city would have to take on, so we're coming back to committee for more discussions about that, and what the potential impact is, what the benefits are.
Thank you. So we'll come back to Finance Committee on November 14.
Yes.
November 14th at 4:30 PM.
May I just say?
Councilmember Burke.
I noticed Dr. Dula is here, as well as Ms. Mary Hargreaves, who's the chairman of the Y senior citizens there, and I just wanted to give that respect and consideration to them. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery had a comment or request?
I had two things quickly, and one is a request from the council, and the first one is a comment, just in the sense that I won't publicly be very, very clear, and I normally don't respond to these things, but it gets to me at a point where we allow individuals to use people's condition that they live in as political footballs. And I think it's a disgrace in those moments when we allow that to happen, and I think that we as a community have to make sure that we allow the community to understand and to know what's happening, what's going on, and not use people's condition that they live in for a political gain. And I think that we want to make sure the community understands that very clearly. We should not be doing that, and every time we do that, I think it's a disgrace. And I'm not saying this council does that, but sometimes when people get up to speak, we have to understand what they're saying, and understand where truth lies in those items. But the second item I want to state is to ask the council actually to reconsider Item C9I, which was brought up in reference to the MWBE goals on the Union Station, and I'm not sure from a staff standpoint if postponing the actual contract adoption would impact anything there, but just in a timely manner to be able to investigate what was stated to us tonight.
So there's, Councilmember Montgomery is asking that the item be reconsidered tonight, so that would take a motion. Do you make that motion?
I move to reconsider Item C9I.
Second.
There's second. Any discussion? I'll favor the motion to reconsider.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to be sure we understand the questions that are being asked. One is the, I think one thing that brought up was the contractor...
MWBE participation.
No, but it's contractor, what's the initials?
CMR.
CMR. That's contract management by risk, correct?
Yeah.
At risk. My understanding that is a fundamentally different way of looking at this project, and would require...
He's not asking that we go back and look at that, I don't think. He's just looking, asking about the MWBE participation.
Well, the person that spoke said that's the first thing we should do.
Well, that's not what Councilmember Montgomery is saying. I don't believe.
No.
Okay. So let's deal with the action that we want to reconsider this first of all. I'll favor the motion to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
The motion passes 7 to 1. We're now reconsider Item C9I. And Councilmember Bessie has a question, I think.
Yes. I've wondered to what degree we would be changing the rules in the middle of the process with regard to this project. Yeah, I think that it is certainly a legitimate question as to whether we are following the appropriate, or setting the appropriate rules regarding minority and women-owned business participation, but I am concerned that we may, may, and that's the operative word here, be taking action to change the standard being applied to a process and a bidding process while it's ongoing, so that's right.
Let's ask Councilmember Montgomery what his purpose were in asking to be reconsidered.
My intention to reconsider this would be not to change whatever parameters were proposed in this, but based upon the information that I received today is that everything was followed in this process correctly, and that is the reason why I supported this moving forward. And hearing otherwise, I would like just the time to make sure that the good faith effort that was certified here was in fact a good faith effort, and if that was the case, then we can bring that back, not changing any of the actual parameters around what was stated, but just to ensure that the vote I cast was cast on sound information.
Let me ask Mr. Turner, do we have the time to continue this to the next meeting with the contractor?
As far as staff is concerned, yes, sir.
All right. So to understand the motion, you would like to basically hold this to the next meeting so that you can get additional information relative to that, so that's the motion to hold this to the next meeting. Any discussion? I'll favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose no?
No.
Motion passes 7 to 1, so we will bring this back at the first meeting in November then.
Mayor.
Councilmember Burke.
And I would hope that we would be consistent if there's a concern any time, that we do the same thing that we've done this evening. Since one individual mentioned, we were talking about the downtown, how we ought to be consistent, so I think, Mr. City Manager, you understand, and Mayor and members of this council.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Is there a motion to, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Clark?
I would just like to comment, because I voted against this twice.
Thank you.
We had somebody who played by the rules, did exactly what we asked them to do. It was reviewed by the, let me get the right committee, by the Citizens MWBE Citizens Advisory Committee, reviewed the documentation, and they approved it, and then we voted on it. And I'm not sure what we're doing, but I have a feeling we have a subcontractor who wasn't selected. Well, folks, you don't change the rules after the horse is out of the gate, and I just think it's, we did this with the, I think it was the gravel contract, because the guy that came in second complained about it, and we rebid it, and ended up exactly where we were. But I just have major problems when you change the rules after everything's done, and I'm concerned that's exactly what we're doing here.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Clark, I don't think we're changing the rules. We're pulling up and saying, wait a minute, let's look at what we did during the process to ensure, as we said, that the process is consistent. Now, going forward, don't get me wrong, I've already heard some rumblings from people too about our process, and we've been hearing it for a while. So instead of us moving forward with a blind eye and thinking that everything is okay, if this is an opportunity for us to review, re-investigate, look at our process, talk to some of the people, because the thing about the council is, the vote stops with us, but the actual internal review of the process, nine times out of 10, are being done by these committees that are appointed by us. So, see, when someone comes forward and say, hey, you people, we need to look at this again, I have no problem with that. I'd rather look at it once, look at it twice. We aren't, you know, heating or holding up the process, we got time. I'd rather we find if there is an issue per our citizens and our process, than for us to move further down the road and say, you know what, we could have corrected this going forward. Maybe not with this, but we can correct something moving forward. So I'm okay with it.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah, Councilmember Montgomery clarified that his intent is to review the additional comments received this evening, and determine to his satisfaction whether he believes that the process that we have in place now was correctly followed, and on that basis, I think postponing to the next meeting is quite a reasonable consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
Now, Ms. Smith, when she came up, she voiced a concern. The meetings that we have, do we have, are they open to the public, like that committee?
The MWBE Review Committee, absolutely. It's a public body that's open to, subject to open meeting laws.
Yes, and I would suggest that individuals who have an interest, that they would go to some of these meetings. The next question, what about the Housing Authority?
It is.
That is public as well. And don't put all of the responsibility, we could solve some of this before we get to this meeting by bringing up your recommendations and suggestions.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Motion second, adjourn. I'll favor the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose no? We adjourn.